Good evening. I'd like to bring the Anacortes City Council meeting to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Here, thanks.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McDougal.
I'd like to move to excuse Mr. Carter from this evening's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
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 All in the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, well, the first item on our agenda this evening is item 2A, which is my weekly COVID-19 update. And I will start with, Skagit County as of yesterday had, we've had a total of 4,153 cases in the county. We've had 61 deaths and 263 people hospitalized. The COVID testing site at Skagit County Fairgrounds will close permanently March 13th. The drive-through testing site will operate Tuesdays and Fridays from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. until March 12th. At that time, if you need a COVID test, you can go to your drugstore or your own individual health practitioner. They want to put all their energies into vaccines. The total number of vaccines to date in Skagit County registered by all vaccine providers has been 25,590. In the state of Washington, we've had 343,000 cases of COVID. We've had 5,024 deaths. On February 24th, the governor paused all movement on the roadmap to recovery for all regions and will remain in Phase 2 for the time being until metrics are updated. In the United States, we've had 28 and a half million cases. We've had 514,000 deaths. And worldwide, we've had 114 million confirmed cases of COVID and 2.4 million deaths, and that was reported by the World Health Organization. The final part of my report tonight is from Island Hospital. And I'm going to give you the stats on COVID-19, and then I'm going to share with you a discussion I had today with Chief Executive Officer Charles Hall about the vaccine situation, at least in how it's affecting our community. Island Hospital to date since beginning of COVID, so about a year, have tested 12,695 people. They had 261 of those people have been positive. And they've admitted 43 people at the hospital. And we've been very fortunate. We've had zero fatalities in Anacortes through people tested at Island Hospital. To date, they've given out 3,299 vaccines. 1,752 received their first doses and 1,500 have received their second dose. As of this week, Island Hospital has not received any, will not have any vaccine appointments for this week because we've received no vaccines. Now, this is where I'm going to read a note that Charles sent to me tonight regarding vaccines. And he said, "Mayor, in late December 2020, Island Hospital established a COVID-19 vaccine clinic with a weekly capacity to administer 800 weekly vaccines. Our hospital has a staff and has made the investment in the state-required technology, equipment, and services to vaccinate our community. We have an eligible population today of over 5,000 B1 qualified community members. In the last four weeks during this crisis, Island Hospital's vaccination clinic has received state allocation of zero doses. This week, we had to cancel three full days of clinics due to not being allocated any vaccines again. This is unacceptable." Since December till today, they've ordered 4,000 doses and they have been able to give, well, I gave you those stats, but they've only been able to give 1,600 first doses, and they have none on hand to date. As of today, Island Hospital has received 1,600 first doses. We do not have any guidance as to what allocation supply to expect in the future. With the state's rapidly changing vaccination strategy, our community has not been considered. We have seen a vast disparity between counties and mass vaccination sites that have plenty of vaccine supply. Through our extraordinary high percentage of eligible Phase 1B community, we continue to see no vaccines. I have requested, this is Charles, I have requested the following from the governor's office: clear guidance for our community on how and when to expect vaccines. Number two, a predictable supply of vaccines so that we may schedule appropriately. We understand the overall supply remains a primary concern, but not having any allocation information when expectations are being created for our community is unacceptable and unworkable. Island Hospital has done 100% of the things to vaccinate our community within our control. We have met with our state and federal representatives to advocate for vaccines for our community. We are the frontline communicators to thousands of people that rely on us to provide and advocate for their healthcare needs. This change in allocation strategy and the lack of available supply to our community is once again, I state, unacceptable. And our community demands and deserves better. Please, I implore you and the city council and members of our community to reach out to our state representatives, to the governor's office, to advocate for a steady vaccine allocation to our community and a communication plan to explain what the problem is that they can't provide vaccines. And this all started this morning because I had, I came into several emails from concerned citizens about why couldn't the city set up a vaccine site? Or, you know, be able to help. And Mr. Miller suggested to me last week, why not the senior center? So I called Charles this morning. He said, "Charles, I'm getting emails. You know, maybe we could help with the senior center, or we could use the parking lot there." And that's when the firestorm hit. He said, "Mayor, I'd be happy to work with the city on a vaccination site if we can get vaccines." So I think what's lacking, even from the legislators, they are not getting clear communication from the governor's office. So I think if we all reached out to whoever we know, and we keep being verbal, and we keep being a little loud, perhaps we can rectify this. So, Mr. Hall, really appreciate you listening to him tonight. He will be sending a letter out to the local papers. He's asking for the community to come together and at least have a fair process that every community has a chance of getting some vaccines. But to go a month with zero vaccines is, the distribution system is broken in the state right now.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Would it be helpful for council to do something as a body, like a resolution or something? Is that a path that's open to us and appropriate?
I don't know. What are other people thinking? I mean, I think we have a lot of paths.
Here, here.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Maybe a joint letter.
Yeah, that might be better, rather than doing a... I could have Alexander work on it tomorrow and send you out, and you can add to it. We'll give you a framework and add your thoughts, and we'll get it out in the next day or so.
Great.
And it may be that Olympia is just not receiving the vaccines either, but we don't know. They're not communicating to us. Yes, Mr. Young, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I totally agree with other council members, but I will add that I think those calls to the governor's office, as well as our state representatives, would be helpful. At least from my sources, I've heard that, you know, that their doses are going down to Whitby. I can assure you of that. And so I was thinking that maybe making those phone calls would be very helpful. But I am hearing other places from immunologists that are out there doing the shots indicating they are fully expecting and have receipt of additional doses. So I do think it's maybe something that we should address relating to Anacortes.
Okay, very good. Very good.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. McDougal.
Do we have any indication of how many doses and appointments the local pharmacies are getting, like Safeway, Walgreens?
I don't have that information.
Correct. I've heard that they are scheduling appointments at Safeway, but yeah, I don't know the numbers, and it certainly is no excuse for what's happening with Island not getting any.
And I've heard the same story from Skagit County Health. They have been equally frustrated. They're set up. They could do several hundred people a day, and they have not always... County-wise, we haven't gotten our allocations either. So it's not just Anacortes. There may be other communities in the state for whatever reason, but... All right, we'll put together a framework or a letter tomorrow. I'll be ready to maybe send it out by Wednesday to our legislative...
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
I do assume that these problems are driven by a physical shortage of the vaccine.
Oh, I believe so too.
Yeah, but communication.
One of the biggest frustrations for the hospital was lack of communication from the state
For sure.
as to what's going on. So we could ask for that, at least that, to be briefed on a weekly basis as to what the problems are.
So I wonder if, you know, in addition to vaccines, people still need testing? And I think for a long time, the county was maybe the only source of that, but now there's quite a few others. Can one of your staff or maybe Skagit County Health, do they have a list of locations where people can seek testing now? That we could help?
I will, I'll find. I know most pharmacies, Hagan's, you know, Safeway. I know a young man that got one tested and results in a few hours at Walgreens here locally.
And you can drive through to make that happen?
Yeah.
Which seems ideal. But yeah, if we had that list to give out to people, I think that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Chris, you here?
Yeah, and Island Hospital has the rapid testing up and running currently too. So, and within about a two-hour turnaround time.
Okay, well, thank you for listening. Charles, I really appreciate you helping him, helping the community with this. All right, so we'll move on now to item 2B, the Social Museum Committee Report.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, Mr. McDougal and I had a quick museum committee meeting. Just to kind of hit the highlight, the high notes, there's been a roof leak that's been going on for quite a while. So fortunately, they were able to move a lot of the inventory downstairs since the museum's closed. I believe this week, there is going to be a patch for the roof. There's going to need to be some work done to kind of deal with the implications of that leak. But, exciting news, there will be a new roof probably installed late spring, and that was part of our budget, so no worries there. It's all planned for. They're really doing a focus with their online presence. They've had about 5,000 posts and interactions with posts on Facebook, and they're putting it all around to kind of encourage people to look at all of their photos and historical documents that they have online, which is always fun to see. They are thinking about relocating the cannery exhibit. That's at the Carnegie Hall right now over to the Maritime History Museum because it kind of fits with that. And staffing-wise, they're all meeting virtually, and surprisingly, it seems like they are able to better connect with one another than being able to do Zoom, so they're finding a way to utilize that. And then, we talked a little bit about the train situation and a couple concerns. We want to make sure they hit those points when that presentation comes to council. Mr. McDougal might have something to add. I had to pop out of it before the end. But, yeah, it was a good meeting.
Hey. All right, item 2C is our Fiber Committee Report.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. McDougal.
Fiber committee met on Thursday. We've actually shifted from a bi-weekly to now a monthly meeting as the project has really, you know, over the past, especially six or eight months, gained a great deal of momentum. And, yeah, so the fiber committee shifted its schedule. So the meeting on Thursday, we covered quite a bit of ground. The EDA grant, it's looking good. We don't have kind of quite final approval, but it's looking good for that, for us to get that award. On staffing, we've got our our outside plant coordinator is on leave for National Guard deployment. And so we've got a backfill where one of the fiber technicians is filling that role. And then we have an open personnel requisition for a nine-month contractor, you know, nine-month assignment to backfill the fiber technician piece, so that that should be opening to the public if no internal applicants apply for it here. The aerial expansion continues. We've got basically 207 customers that are in queue to be installed. So we've passed, you know, those areas, 1 through 6, and there's a number of them have already been installed, but then, you know, 207 on the list to get the final hookups done. Hopefully, we'll be adding more and more as we go as well. The 2021 expansion, so to the West End, and of course, you know, the West End expansion, it was decided to do that in 2021 and shift the schedule because kind of the remainder of the East End construction is tied to that EDA grant and the, you know, the $2.25 million. So that's why the East End got shifted to 2022. So that West End expansion, the design is happening now and kind of through March. And then, sort of finalize the bill and materials, and we expect construction for the backbone to be May through June roughly, and then customer installations to follow. So, you know, we'll be hitting customer installations all year long in 1 through 6, as well as, you know, also in the West End, starting after June.
Exciting.
Some very quick numbers. We have, as of Thursday, we had just shy of 600 customers activated. We may have crossed the 600 threshold today. And in all of our test areas, or, you know, in the CBD Old Town and M Avenue, we're basically above 45% market share. In two of those, M Avenue, we're just below, we're at 43%. And then, in the expansion areas, we're at 26% signups. And then, the remainder of the city, we're a total of just shy of 23%. So numbers are looking good. Ryan or Matt, did you want to add anything?
Thank you. We'll move on now to item 2D, our Public Works Committee.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met just prior to this meeting. Mr. Young, Mr. Walters, and myself, along with staff, of course, we discussed briefly the 12th and Commercial project, mainly concerns brought up by constituents about pedestrian safety across the roundabout, particularly from the east, west side coming east, like Chandler Square people. We learned that 11th and 13th and commercial intersections will also be addressed, and all of these things will be addressed by the design team as they move forward. So that's coming up. We spoke about the Outfall project, and the marine portion of the project will go out to bid in the next couple of weeks. The request for quotes was sent to about 10 different companies, and we'll wait to hear back from those, and the work will start in August. It's just important to get the contractor, the marine contractors lined up well before that, so we make sure that we have them when we need them. We spoke of the wastewater treatment plant solids handling situation, and staff is proceeding with consultants for the universe of options that are available to us. And we did have an update on repairs and upgrades done on the treatment plant since 2015, which totaled $2.2 million since, from 2015 till now. And that's not just, that's not regular maintenance and operations. That is repairs and upgrades. So there's sort of this ticking, there's a ticker of how much money is being spent over time. So more on that later. We addressed the risk and resiliency report for our water treatment plant and distribution system, and that is being analyzed, all the potential threats and how to mitigate those and protect our system. And by the end of June, there will be an emergency plan that will come forward to council on how to address those and what plans and projects should go into our capital facilities plan with costs. So there's a lot going on there, but it's going to be great to see what comes out of that and what we can do to make our system safer. There will be some Public Works staffing requests upcoming to council soon. And that's all I really need to say about that right now. We'll learn a lot more about it soon. The Spring Dump Day has been canceled due to COVID, and their staff's playing that month-to-month to see when that can happen and to what degree. But, so it's canceled for now. And Mr. Buckenmeyer is going to speak, has been invited to speak at a Washington Operator Workshop to many other professionals in the field about our fiber in our water lines project. So it was quite an honor for him to be chosen to speak at that. And our last piece of news is that staff has submitted six grants in the last two weeks for $56.7 million for Commercial Avenue from 13th to 34th Streets. So two grants to the Senate, two grants to the House, and that would be gigantic, of course, if those came through. So fingers crossed on that, and congratulations to staff for getting that done so quickly. Also, two grants to WCIA, one for sidewalk cuts for safety and trip hazard removal, and then a camera slash cutter to go into sewer lines and cut tree limbs and roots out of those sewer lines. So, as usual, Public Works is doing all kinds of awesome stuff, and it's fun to learn about. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. Any additional reports on anything? Wonderful. Okay, we'll move on now to public comment. And if there's anyone with us this evening that would like to talk to the council about anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand at this time, and we'll call on you. Okay, I don't see any raised hands. We will move on to item 4, our consent agenda, items A through E. What is your pleasure, council?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. McDougal?
I move to approve items A through E on the consent agenda this evening.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Miller. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to item 5 and our other business. This is 5A. This is open for public comment. This is a discussion with possible action. This is the Parker Recreation Impact Fee Rate Study. Mr. Lunsford?
Hello, Mayor Gear, council. Good evening. So I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully, I can pull that off. Rate. Now you want to see the slideshow. Okay, here we go. So you've seen this before. This is just to help the public refresh their memory about what we're doing. So we have not upgraded or updated our impact fee since 1998. We've hired Burke Consulting to help develop a new rate study that was provided in 2020 for Parks and Recreation, and our consultants from Burke are joining us tonight. The new fees, we base on growth projections and include residential and commercial development. And our current impact fees right now for residential are $616. The proposed fee would go up to $1,362.47 for a single-family resident and $981.63 for multifamily. And you can see, based on the chart below, the comparison with our, some of our neighboring communities, Oak Harbor, Mount Vernon, and Cedar Woolley, what they're charging. So, off to the next slide. This is kind of the underpinnings of what led to the determination for our single-family, multifamily. And I know that council had a lot of questions about multifamily. And so not only are consultants from Burke here to help us, but Mr. Meesmer is here to talk about that too, just about the city's whole approach on that. And then, as I said, we're going to introduce commercial rates in this in this resolution, excuse this ordinance. And you can see here the justification for that and the amounts. And this is what it would go towards. You can see with the amount, each for each, the percentage of the cost related to growth and the impact fee eligible funding down the line over, I believe, a 10-year period. So, we've gone over this before. These slides will be made available to Ms. Hunt so she can have those published for the public as well. And I'm going to go to any questions, if we need to have any discussion or clarification on these points, and then I would invite councils to ask questions and have our consultants from Burke jump in if they want to introduce themselves if there are no questions. So, Mayor, council, are there any questions for us at this point? Okay.
Mayor Gear?
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It was McDougal.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question, and maybe, well, did you have more presentation coming or Burke coming on? Or?
I have, yeah, Mr. McDougal, I have, if you're ready for questions, I know that you had some in the past, but I think that I deferred to the Burke consultants. So why don't we just have them come on and introduce themselves? And then you can pose your questions to them.
Perfect, yep.
Hello, Burke?
Good evening. My name is Jason Hennessy. I'm a senior associate with Burke Consulting, and I was the, I am the project manager overseeing the park impact update. I'm joined tonight by my colleague.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sherry Su. I am a senior associate with Burke Consulting, and I was an analyst supporting Jason on this study. Looking forward to answering your questions.
All right, Mr. McDougal, go ahead. Jason and Sherry have been fantastic assistants with us, and essentially, we're their assistants. They've guided us through this whole process with the information that we provided. So they're very helpful, so here we go.
Right. Jason, Sherry, thank you for joining us this evening. Yeah, my question was on the residential and the commercial. If I do the math, like, tell me if I'm doing the math correctly. If I multiply the per capita share of capital need by the growth in resident equivalent, I get the 1 point, roughly $1.7 million number, correct?
Sorry, before I say yes, I was just finding, are you
Yeah.
a particular exhibit, just so I can make sure I say yes to the right math?
Right. Let me go to, no, not that one. I think it's Exhibit 15.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I apologize for, I have it open, but...
No worries, yeah.
Oh, $1.7 million? Yes. So that's the amount identified from, from growth based upon per capita valuation, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so, and that's for the residential. We basically, we multiply those two numbers, the growth in residence and the per capita, and it gets the $1.7 million. But we also have the commercial, which appears to be a separate figure. Like if I tried adding up the adjusted park impact fee rate per thousand feet times the actual thousand feet, and I don't know if I did my math correct, but are we adding more than the $1.7 million? Or does the $1.7 million number go up with the addition of the commercial?
No, the $1.7 million is allocated across both the residential and the commercial. We used a concept called residence, residential equivalency, which is to look at sort of the number of hours that the parks are available to employees at businesses, and then say that this is how much of a resident they are worth. Not, anyway. So the $1.7 million is spread across that number, not just pure population.
I see, I see. So then, like Exhibit 16, those numbers basically contribute essentially resident equivalents to Exhibit 15? And that's how we get the $1.7 million?
Yeah, that's why the, there's a line about the estimated number of employees. That's sort of to convert into how many resident equivalents are expected to be produced by.
Okay, got it. Okay. Thank you. That, that helps. So now I'm following the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Thank you, Jason and Sherry. Any, any other questions from council for Burke, our consultants from Burke?
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Uh, the question I've asked a couple of times before was if there are other thresholds that we can articulate for residential, like small units, um, to lower the cost. I understand that. Uh, I think it's City of Olympia has a lower threshold, um, or has, has a, a, a square footage threshold maybe for units in a certain area of town where they expect that there will be lesser impact on parks and thus charge a smaller fee. The theory being a smaller unit will have fewer people, fewer people have lesser impact. Did we look at doing anything like that? And is there any approach like that that is legal, workable, or could be expanded to further classify various types of residences more?
So to answer your first question, we did not look at an equivalent approach here. Hard, I, I, my instinct is to explain why, but I, uh, you didn't ask that directly, but I'm, I'm going to go ahead unless you tell me otherwise. Yeah, um, um, so the City of Olympia is actually one of the only jurisdictions that have been sued over its park impact fees on the basis of their service area. And so, um, at least partially, and, and they did win the, um, they won the decision, but they were using a single service area for the entire city. And developers said that there's really no relation between my development on this side of town and, and this project that you're putting in on the other. Um, their creation of the downtown subarea and the change that they made to their impact fees is partially helps to speak to that issue. Um, it created basically two service areas for them. Not that they had to, but, um, it just helps alleviate a little bit of pressure. They, specifically, they cite that the number of people living in multifamily within the downtown core of Olympia is significantly less than most of their other housing, and that's really their justification for. We were not aware of an equivalent, um, in Anacortes that would really justify that there's less impact on development going on. Um, it doesn't mean it couldn't be considered. Uh, so to your second question, are there legal options? Absolutely. Um, of there, I know of about forty-plus jurisdictions in Washington State that have, that have park districts, excuse me, park impact fees. Um, and of those, I'm only aware of one that uses a size-based impact fee, the City of Bothell. Uh, they do based upon, I think, five hundred foot increments. I could, I could get the exact numbers, but um, it's relative, I mean, it is the only one. I know that Burke has explored this for other jurisdictions. I've been curious about the question. There's always a trade-off between the complexity of what you're, you're, uh, pardon me, what you're collecting at the permit counter, um, versus what you actually are going to be getting as, as far as the, the fees themselves. Um, so what I mean by that is that it puts kind of a burden on, on the permitting staff about trying to figure out what size to categorize each one. I, I mean, it's, that's one consideration.
I follow you.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely simplicity has its virtues, but the permit staff already have to calculate square footage of units for a number of reasons. Um, I do think that our objective, and I think this is shared probably by the entirety of council, is to, um, take care of our parks, make sure that development pays for itself, but also avoid burdening, uh, new construction, especially new construction that is of more affordable than other new construction. I think parks is by far not the biggest component of, of the impact fees and other connection fees that burden new construction. But it's one of them and you're, and, and Burke, this is the first time we've had Burke weigh in on this. Our other impact fees and other analysis has been done by other consultants.
We did the fire, uh, impact fee update.
Oh, you did fire as well? Okay.
Uh, yeah, and a similar approach. Like not, but without the, there was no downtown consideration in that study either.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it, you know, I agree with, uh, what Mr. Walters was saying about trying, we're, we're trying to figure out the, the, this, a, a square footage component of it. It seems like everything goes to the estimated number of residents per unit. And I guess, and, and I've seen data in Anacortes about what that is, and I, I just want to make sure that's really the, um, the right number. It seems like that's the main standard because that's what we've used for the commercial rate schedule for employees and then for the single and multifamily unit. You know, give me a little more insight on how that, that estimated number of residents per unit comes up. Because that's what we're, that's what, when we talk cottage housing, you know, we're, or multifamily housing, again, in square footage, we're thinking a smaller number of residents. So I guess I'm hoping that you convince us that that's maybe not the right way of, of, of thinking, of thinking about it because that's not the way you did this study. Does that make sense?
I believe so. And I'm going to, I'm going to answer the question and you can tell me if I, if I missed it. Um, so we use the Census Bureau's estimation from the American Census, um, American Community Survey, excuse me, um, from the Census Bureau on average number of people residing in each type of housing. Um, and so that's where, um, in the aforementioned exhibit fifteen, it's the third line or fourth line in there, two point three eight for single family and one point seven one for multifamily. So as you would kind of anticipate, there are more people living on average in Anacortes in single-family homes versus multifamily homes. And that then is reflected in the park impact fee unit, the cost per unit. Um, the idea being here is that you're really trying to collect a certain amount per person. But unfortunately, you know, we're collecting them on a unit basis. And so we have to at some point make some kind of assumption about how many people per unit. Um, and so our basis here is that the future, the near future is likely to be similar to the near past. Um, and so those numbers are hopefully correct, um, but there's always an opportunity to, to move them if they don't reflect recent changes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think you answered the question. Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Um, you know, just as sort of a follow-up, I guess it's a, 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 a statement to consider is that recognizing, I guess the point is to, if I'll push for affordable housing and our push to, you know, make that possible here in our area is part of this. Uh, you know, I do say though, that maybe there's a provision we could do for something like that because if San Juan Passage is any example, we've got smaller sized units, but the value of those units are higher than, um, you know, you know, other neighborhoods. So I, I think that this is pretty much spot on, but I do think, I hear the point about trying to make it so it's less cost prohibitive for what we're attempting to do by way of affordable housing, smaller unit size. I get that.
Thank you.
Great. Additional comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor Gear.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, you know, I, we've had some discussions, I think, probably in, in our planning committee about this issue and, and ideally if, if there was, you know, kind of tying it to square footage size. And, and to me at least, an understanding of, you know, that six hundred foot square foot bonus height was kind of that threshold of how we could do so. Um, I'm less inclined to get in the weeds about square footage and more inclined to really make sure that we focus on, um, when it comes to real affordable housing, that it's tied to income and, and that those have some very specific, um, requirements, not just smaller units, that we need to make sure that that's our emphasis, um, more than anything else. I, I, I don't know how, how many units that were really going to impact by saying it's a five hundred square foot. You know, it's a few hundred dollars less or a six hundred or an eight hundred square foot. I, I, I'm more inclined to see how the impact fees work and have it come back to us if we're, if we're getting feedback that those cottage homes are smaller, are not getting built because of this park impact fee. And that we really, um, make it and emphasize and focus on how we can, um, encourage through, uh, waiving of, um, impact fees or discounts of impact fees for very specific income pace, income-based affordable housing. Um, that's where I want to see us kind of give that relief.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, you know, wholeheartedly. I guess it's, it's always challenging when you look at more than doubling a, doubling a fee, you know, right, right up front. Um, and I'm sure there's no way to legally phase, phase something like this in because the numbers are the numbers. And if we accept that this is the right calculus, then, then it should be adjusted to this number. And, and that, that is what it is.
We are aware of other locations that have phased in their park impact fee.
Okay, so that's, that's good information to know. And that's kind of, uh, how I, I would tend to approach something like this. I, I just, I'm concerned about, look, you do all this work to study to get the right number. And if it's the right number, that's what it needs to be. But, uh, I, I would be interested in some sort of phased-in approach.
They said, um, when they did a phased-in approach, was it, was it like over like five years? I mean, like every year it went up? I mean, what did that look like?
They did, um, they listed what the final would be so that developers could plan accordingly. And then it went up by thirds over three years.
Three years, okay.
Yeah, so the, so by the third year, I, I really, I guess it was two years, but by the third year, they were, they were charging the full price. So the first year was one-third of, second year, two-thirds, and then finally they were in the full impact fee.
Now a lot builders plan, um, okay.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Um, I think maybe rather than a phase-in, a, a delayed implementation would have, uh, the most utility because, um, it's not like you're paying these fees every day. They're only charged on new development. And if someone is about to submit a new development, they already have a pro forma with the existing fees. I don't know that they benefit too much from the phase, but they benefit from that delay. If we were to adopt it today, it screws up people's existing, uh, plans. But if we adopt it with a, uh, a, a phase in or a delay of six months out, then somebody who already has a plan has six months to get that plan submitted. So, so that would be my approach that way. I, 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 again, am not very worried about the park impact fee by itself because it's, it's just not the major component of all the fees that we're charging on development. But I do think that we need to step back and, and look at how we can adjust these things. We already have the program that, um, allows for waiver of the fees if you're doing bona fide affordable housing with all the constraints associated with that. You know, the requirement to make sure that you're verifying incomes and those kinds of things. But when we did the new development code, our thinking at the time was that that was going to be, and, and our thinking was based on feedback that we got from the development community, that nobody was really going to engage in that program unless they were doing some kind of subsidized housing already, you know, like the, the, like the family center is. And we were trying to find some other alternative where it wouldn't require that overhead of all the, the monitoring program and everything. And I certainly remain open to thinking that, you know, the square footage limitation is maybe not the right approach. But I don't think that the monitoring program approach is going to work in every case either. I certainly don't advocate getting rid of it because where it does work, fantastic. Um, but where it doesn't work, I think we still need to provide some kind of incentive for smaller, more modest housing that isn't McMansions. So let's, uh, let's, let's turn that into a question. Burke, have you seen any examples of that? Where, uh, look, look outside of just park impact fees. Have you seen other examples where people have received some kind of incentive to do more modest housing by some kind of lowering of impact fees or connection fees or permit fees or, you know, a-anything the city can do that way?
So, yes, we have seen that, not with impact fees. Uh, impact fees by statute are development or growth paying for growth. It's the, the line that always gets used. But, um, if you have a, a couple who build a seven thousand foot house and it's just the two of them living there, they in theory have the same impact as a couple that built, move into a five hundred square foot studio on the park system. And so park impact fees are not a great method for trying to encourage certain types of development. Um, they can reinforce other policies. So for example, um, the low-income housing exemption was, has been mentioned. Um, that's a great example of something where it can help reinforce, uh, this, a city's overall goal of increasing low-income housing. To the other fee question, um, I, I think that the simple answer is yes. Like definitely we see places and aware of places where they are trying to shape growth through fees. I'm kind of going rambling here, but the impact fees themselves tend not to be high enough that you're causing a lot of behavioral changes. And then one last thing, and I'll stop talking. Um, the, there is at least a couple of communities in, in the east, uh, eastern side, part of, uh, King County that arguably have impact fees that are so large that they're and, and they've publicly said that the reason why they're so large is to discourage development. Uh, but those are fees in the fourteen thousand, sixteen thousand range in the City of San Amish and City of Isipul.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Young.
You know, I, I think that, you know, the discussion is really good. I really like it and it's enlightening in many ways. But I still say at the bottom line, we've not had an increase since nineteen ninety-eight. And I think that at the end of the day, that, um, you know, these are things that we will need going forward. So I'm supportive of that. I think as we began to address those other issues that we're concerned about, whether it's like, um, um, the discussion about, um, affordable housing, those are additional items that I think that we can make modifications for. But by way of this discussion tonight, I'm very supportive. I think the reality is we hate to have increases. Who wants them? But the truth is, we need them. We've not had one since nineteen ninety-eight. And I think that it's in our interest to continue to provide the services that we do, the parks that we have, just everything that, you know, the impact on our city because we are growing. And so I'm supportive of it.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Maltin.
It seems to me that from the head nods that I saw, that most council members seem to feel that adopting the ordinance approving the Parks and Rec impact fees with a six-month delay is something that people could, could get behind. So I would like to move to approve ordinance three zero eight-five approving the Parks and Rec impact fees with a date of inaction of six months from today. September 1st, 2021.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath. And all they did was add the six month delay to that. So Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mayor, Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Before we close out on this item, um, I wonder if Mr. Lunsford or any other staff that want to weigh in could, um, could indicate whether we think now that we will have gone through all of our impact fees, each type. If we are equipped to calculate these ourselves, the next time we update our capital facilities plan and with the new projects and things. I mean, I definitely think there's value in having consultants from that I've experienced in other jurisdictions, but also we've talked repeatedly about maybe not hiring consultants next time.
I, I can give you, my opinion is that the, um, staff doesn't have the expertise to do this in-house and to do it well. So we wanted to work with Burke and make this, um, as good as we can. There are other places we can save on consultants, you know, drawing up plans, um, going through community planning processes. With the RCW and such regarding impact fees, that, that would be a challenge for our staff to handle that and to do it well. Other places we can save money and, and will do that. But this one, because of the finance requirements and the state rules and, uh, guidelines around it, I would feel uncomfortable. Unless you give me someone who has, you know, greater expertise in this to help us with. So that, that's my answer for this one. Other places, yes, impact fees would be a challenge.
Okay, I think that's, that's good feedback. And maybe we can build that, that expertise in-house. I mean, not necessarily in the Parks Department. It's more applicable more broadly than that. Thanks.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Hunt, can you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Uh, the next item is item B, and this is open for public comment. And this is funding for additional fire FTEs after a safer grant expires. Um, and this is more of a head nod situation tonight. Uh, once you hear the presentation, if you're comfortable with the fire department uh, continuing work on a safer grant, and that's what we're looking for this evening. So Ms. Chief Gans or Kennedy, who is going to do the honors to start?
Uh, Mayor Gear.
Ms. Hope, Mr. Hoagland.
Uh, I can kick this off, um, kind of go through this PowerPoint slide. Chief Gans and Assistant Chief Kennedy are both on the line, uh, to help bolster the conversation. But I can work through these slides to begin with.
Okay, let's move ahead then.
Okey dokey. Okay, so the, uh, the title on the agenda was the funding after the safer grant expires. And I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of the, uh, the full picture of what we're looking at. But the safer grant, we'll go through what safer grant is and then kind of the, uh, the impacts around that. But safer grant is a really great opportunity. It stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. The city has used this grant in the past, a number of years ago, to bring on an additional firefighter. But safer grant is federal program runs through FEMA, provides three years of personnel funding. In our case, we're looking at three firefighter positions. And that would be an estimated 1.1 million dollars over the three-year grant period that we would receive in funding for those three staff positions. Uh, the current staffing level at the fire department does not meet the statutory requirements to perform an imminent rescue upon arrival of the first engine. And that's really what we're, um, why we're looking at this at this time. I want to move forward with this. So the safer grant opportunity, it would pay for three full-time firefighters, firefighter paramedics for three years. And we'd be looking at the budget years 2022 through 2024. So these additional staff would allow Anacortes to meet the two in, one out standard for the main fire station. Uh, it wouldn't bring us up to snuff, uh, across the board with the current situation. These staff would get us on, up to snuff on one station, but not for all stations. So in order to meet standards across the board, we would need 36 firefighters. We currently have 25, uh, and one of those 25 is, I have it listed here on the long-term leave. That's incorrect. That firefighter is actually on light duty at this point, but it puts us short about a dozen firefighters. Uh, and the safer request would be for three. So there are a number of budget considerations that I wanted to put back in front of council. We've talked about these at various times in our capital facilities plan meetings and our budget meetings. But just kind of a refresher, we do have a number of items that we have in front of us that, that we need to keep in mind. A new ladder truck, there's, uh, the state has a financing program that we could potentially take advantage of. That would, um, generate about a hundred thousand dollar annual requirement to make the financing payment. Also permanent fire station three, it's something that's in our capital facilities plan, something we need to address at some point. If we're considering a $5 million station over 20 years at 3%, that's about $336,000 annually. As council will remember, we do have a 4.3 million dollar line of credit that we are using to continue the uh, the fiber backbone build out, and that'll be due at the end of January 2024. Uh, and another thing that all council members may not be aware of is the agreement that we have with Skagit County to use the Skagit County jail as funding requirements fall short of what the expenditures are. That shortfall is, uh, is made up through the interlocal members of which the city of Anacortes is one of them. And it looks like, uh, that may develop starting in 2022. Uh, it's not a huge amount. We might be looking at around $20,000. But again, it's, it's an interlocal requirement, so something that we need to be aware of. And in the current year, 2021 budget in our governmental funds, that's the funds that are primarily funded through tax revenues. Uh, we don't have full equipment replacement charges budgeted, so that's about a $922,000 deferral in the current year. So this is, um, just a budget look in bar chart format of what the fire station, the fire EMS budget looks like. So, um, the matrix down here shows by year 2020, 2021, we have 25 firefighters. So these green bars represent 25 firefighters. And this light orange section here is what that expenditure growth is estimated to be out through 2028. And that's regardless of whether we bring on an additional firefight, you know, the additional three firefighters or not. That's the requirement that we'll be looking at. The blue bar represents what our safer grant would be. And then the red bars is what that, uh, that additional cost would be once the safer grant expires. And then those, um, amounts are listed down here. So 2025, we're thinking, estimating that those three positions coming in at 2022 at the, at the base level and then, um, stepping out through the first several years. 2025 is estimated to be about 408,000 for those three positions.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Um, I know, um, Steve or maybe, um, either the chiefs may speak to this a little later on. Uh, although the grant will be for, the safer grant will be for three years. What are the possibilities of other grants to sort of help us along the way? And funding that, are there possibilities for other type grants that may be able to help us out? So we don't have to do this lift alone?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Look, Mr. Young, so with regards to for staffing, we are not aware of any that would be continued grants that would be available, other than we could apply for a new one when this one expires. However, there are other ways that we could help reduce the budget to, or the budget demands to make room for additional staffing costs. Uh, one of those would be alternate funding sources for some of our capital projects. And also what I'd like to point out in there is Mr. Hoagland did a great job of listing out some of the major capital expenses that we're going to be looking at over the next few years. Keep in mind, because of what we put in place two years ago with the fire impact fees, we will have some funding coming in there to help offset some of those additional capital costs. And then by doing that, we could free up some money for staffing.
That, that was what I was alluding to. I was just wanting to hear more about that. And so because, you know, and looking at just these numbers and what the cost would be later on for us, I was just curious if there were other ways creative that we could minimize the impact on our budget. So, okay, thank you. You've answered my question. Thank you, Steve.
Uh, so looking, looking at, uh, some of the budget elements from the 2021 budget. Council will remember it was a challenging budget this, uh, this last go around. And these are, um, several positions that we, um, that we looked at. And, uh, there's two matrices here. This, this first one right here says FTEs eliminated. So these are positions that we, that we had in prior budgets that we eliminated in the 2021 budget. They were, um, and then the second one, FTEs budgeted but not filled. So these are, uh, staff positions that are in the current 2021 budget, um, but have not been filled. And through, uh, because of the hiring freeze that is currently in place, it continues to be in place. It would take council approval to hire these, uh, any of these positions. So the total of these FTEs, not filled but budgeted for, it's about 432,000. And I'm not, I, I, I'm just illustrating that this, this seems to me like kind of an obvious, an obvious path to a source of funding. Uh, when you look at those positions in current dollars, 2021 is 432,000. After, uh, several years of CPI growth, that works up to 505,000. In 2025, we're thinking we'll need 408,000 for those safer positions. Or, I'm sorry, to pay for those three positions that the safer grant paid for for the first three years. Uh, and that would be more than, more than enough. And I, uh, if you look at the council packets, the material I, I put in there, the matrix I have here is a little bit different. I apologize. I was using a, a different methodology that wasn't quite as accurate. But that's, um, to me, as, as we were talking about this, and I was kind of thinking long-term, how we would fund those, that to me seemed like, um, you know, at least partially a logical path.
Yeah.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Can we look at that slide again, please? Thank you. I just want to clarify, Mr. Hoagland, are we actually talking about eliminating our senior center administrator, two library workers, a parts maintenance person, a streets or maintenance person, and a senior engineering tech? We're just those, this, please clarify for me.
So what I'm
Eliminating those positions in favor of three firefighters?
So what I'm illustrating here is that, so if, if you think back pre-COVID, we had, um, these positions of 282,000 and these other positions unfilled of 432,000. So we had nearly $800,000 in additional funding in that pre-COVID budget. Additionally, we had 922,000 of ER and R replacement funds in that pre-COVID budget. So I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest anything in particular. What, but what I am illustrating is that we currently have room in the budget to make this up. And I, the way, I guess the way my mind works, I, I, I like knowing that we have a balanced budget, and this provides a very direct path to a balanced budget. Ultimately, it's council's responsibility in, um, the priorities that, uh, funding, you know, which, which priorities will receive funding in which order. But this was to illustrate that there is, in my mind, there's currently a funding path. Even though you don't need a funding path for another four years from now.
Mr. Hoagland, could you address also the, the growing economy? I mean, we're in the first two months of '21 and we're already surpassing sales tax that we saw pre-COVID.
Sure.
So, you know, I don't know if we were just cautiously looked at how our economy grew.
Here, let me jump down. I have a couple of
Oh, you do? Well, then we can wait for that.
So I just, so there's, so as I said, I don't, I don't want to lose sight of some of these other things that we have cut out of the budget. I think ultimately, um, council, uh, will want to address some of those positions that we've, um, that we haven't filled. The ER and R, I mean, there's certain, there's, there's no requirement to have a fully funded ER and R account. That's something we've done in the past. But there's, but that provides a path as well, if you will. But as, as Mayor Gear is, is alluding to, there's certainly the possibility that that the budget could, or the, the actual economy could, could grow much larger or much more quickly than, than our budget. And so I, I kind of was thinking about that and I put a couple of disclaimers in here that it's certainly possible that the expectations that I'm putting out in our revenue budget is too low. I just read, um, last week, a revenue estimate, or I'm sorry, a GDP estimate for 2021, a 5.3% growth compared to negative 3.1% in 2020. So that would go a long way in, um, you know, kind of fixing some of those budget issues we're looking at. At the same time, I, another thing, maybe I'm just too conservative. I want to make sure, just want to make sure we're not losing sight of these things. It also does not assume inflation. I, I just read today that, uh, Americans are sitting on something like 1.6 trillion dollars in savings from the lack of spending that happened in 2020. And if the economy were to open up immediately and all of that money hit the economy, we may be looking at inflation. So there may be a, you know, that may be a double edged sword. But it, but it's certainly possible, um, the recovery that we saw in our, in our sales tax and some of our other revenue streams. If that were to continue, it's certainly possible that you could do, you could do both. You wouldn't have to make a choice between
Mayor, thank you for, uh, for helping out. I, I of course love, uh, Mr. Hoagland's very uh, conservative viewpoint, especially when it comes to FTE. But I understood exactly what you were saying, Mayor, about, hey, the good news is three years from now, we're hoping that, you know, revenues can, can, can help out with this issue. But I do appreciate the way, uh, Mr. Hoagland presented it. Cause that's the, that's my, my, that was my biggest concern. And those on the Public Safety Committee know that, uh, I express those concerns about the additional FTEs. And again, I, I'd like to thank, uh, Jack Kennedy for, uh, coming up with a lot of answers. We've had this discussion many times about our understaffed, uh, fire department when it comes to, uh, a two in, two in one out imminent rescue. Uh, this is a, I think, a good opportunity to, to, to fill that gap that we've been trying with volunteers, with part paid, part time, with a lot of other ways to try to, uh, try to come up with a solution because we realized that, you know, that the, the initial number that Mr. Hoagland brought, the 12 firefighters that we've been talking about since this was a, a problem presented to the council many, many years ago. The 12 certainly we can't afford, but being able to do three and get the main station uh, capable of doing that kind of response, I think that reduces our risk pretty dramatically when it comes to two and, two and one out, because they're coming from the same station. So I know, you know, uh, um, uh, Mr. Chief Kennedy or Chief Gans would probably weigh in on that. But I, I think that's the big, that's the big operational, uh, payback is having that two and one coming in from the same unit rather than from, from different, uh, different stations. So yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I'm, I'm supportive of this, uh, method. And but I appreciate, uh, Mr. Hoagland's very, uh, very deep concern like I have with the, uh, the FTEs that, that will be forever, uh, part of our budget.
Yeah. And, and I also, the reason we're in such good shape today in the city is because of Mr. Hoagland's conservative nature and pointing things out. And we do have reserves that we didn't have seven years ago. Even though we're not funding to the level he'd like this year, we've got money in the bank that he didn't have before. And I also And I also want, it's really important to me to remind the council that when we just started these discussions about needing more firefighters, it was six, seven years ago. And we've grown, the community's grown by 2,000 or 3,000 people. And every year, we build, I don't know, we built several hundred new homes in that time. So, I feel like we're not only, we don't do something, you know, we're father in the hole that we were seven years ago of not even meeting a minimum. And somehow, we can balance that with total respect for what we have to figure out how to pay for the next four or five years and, you know, make adjustments as we go. And yes, we need a senior center director. We're hoping to hire in June, by the way. We need, we need a lot of things, but, all right, I'll be quiet right now. But, but thank you, Steve. You always look out for us, and I appreciate that.
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton, and then Mr. Walters?
Thank you. I applaud Mr. Hoagland's conservative estimates. They've done us very well in the past, and I expect them to also do in the future. So, utmost respect. I would like to look at that slide of the FTEs eliminated and the hiring freeze, just for reference, because I think when our economy does recover and we do have more money coming in, I would like to see those positions filled. And I would like to see some of the ones that were cut considered for coming back, because our library and our parks and our senior centers, our streets and our engineering are as vital as anything, including public safety. I feel like that's obviously extremely important, but so are these other positions and these departments. They're not just amenities, they are what we need to be a thriving community. So, when we talk about the money that's going to come back, I want money to go to these positions as well.
Okay, thank you. Was it Mr. Walters? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. To respond to Ms. Moulton's point from earlier, yeah, I didn't take Mr. Hoagland's presentation of this slide as an actual proposal, but rather just as an illustration, as he said, of sort of the gravity of the situation and how much things cost. I do think that we very deliberately approved the hiring freeze in the 2021 budget, because every day that goes by that we don't fill these positions is money saved. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to approve rehiring or filling these positions just because we end up with more sales tax revenue coming in the door, but also because there is an urgent need. And I hope that when something comes to us for approval in that manner, that it comes with an explanation of why it's critical right now, because otherwise, I would continue to vote to hold those open. All these types of positions are really critical, but we are in a pandemic where we have a lot of buildings closed. And anytime we can save a dollar, I think, helps push that, you know, that date when the SAFER grant ends, and we've got to come up with the, three years from now, the money to fill, to cover those positions, that could be four years from now, if we have somehow saved a year's worth of dollars that we can squirrel away. So, I like, saving money is virtuous, and we should do that whenever it is we can. But we're really not talking about the hiring freeze or these positions right now. I think really all we're talking about is whether we want to commit to the SAFER grant and commit to the fact that we're going to have three employees and need to be paid for at the end of the SAFER grant. Obviously, we should try as hard as possible to get another grant or some other funding stream to pay for them. But if we can't do that, it seems to me that, as others have said, this is still important, especially because we could achieve that two-in-one-out at least one station. That is valuable to me. And I will take it on faith that we can figure this out three years from now.
Steve, do you have anything else in your presentation, or you want to let Assistant Chief Kennedy or Chief Gans speak?
Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, no, thank you. It was very detailed, really appreciate it. Assistant Chief Kennedy or Chief Gans, additional comments or thoughts as the council moves this over?
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
So, I think Steve did a pretty good job, and I appreciate the questions that the council has brought forward. We do have some time to make a plan if we are successful with the SAFER grant. And what I would recommend is that we go ahead and continue the application for the SAFER grant. There is no guarantee that we would be approved. We would be at a higher chance of success because we currently do not meet the two-in-one-out. And by creating a proposal with the SAFER grant that brings us to that, at least at the one station, that puts us at a much higher chance of success than many other jurisdictions. And as I believe it was Councilmember Miller brought up, the majority of our homes and businesses are in the Station 1 area, and therefore, we would have that engine being able to have the capability of the two-in-one-out, which would serve about 75% of the responses that we roll out on.
That's great.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
I just have one question about the two-in-one-out for the benefit of public at home and some of us who don't know exactly what that means. Could you do a brief description of what that is?
Yes, I'd be more than happy to. Thank you. So, what the two-in-one-out refers to is, let me back up just a little bit. The actual law calls for a two-in, two-out. And what that means is that when we get on scene of a fire and we commit a minimum of two people to go inside that structure, whether for firefighting or rescue purposes, we have to have two people on the outside for safety, and that is state law. There is an exception to that, which is what the two-in-one-out is, and that is in a known rescue situation. And there are very specific requirements to meet that two-in-one-out. And what means, when we get on scene, somebody has to be there saying, there absolutely is somebody inside that building, and we know that we can affect a rescue. Then we can go in with two, with only one person on the outside to affect that rescue for, again, a known rescue situation.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Mayor Gere? Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone has said. There's three things that I just want to make sure is, one, you know, I appreciate Mr. Hoagland and kind of that comparison of staff, staffing positions that have been either frozen or removed. It shows how many, how many folks we've, how many positions we've saved. But I do agree that we should make sure to go and revisit those and thoughtful, have some thoughtful discussions, because they were important, they achieved important things in the various departments in which they were housed. But fortunately, we have three years to also factor in these three additional positions. So, that means, you know, whenever we talk about the 2022, 2023 budget, I want us to have this in the back of our mind, what, how much that's going to cost and what we can, how that's going to fit in. I don't know if that means we kind of almost tag it and use that, that those funds are going to be, need to be there in the future, but when we talk about adding additional staff, we need to factor that in. The second thing is, and it's come up quite often in our public safety meetings, is that I really, really, really want to see a strategic plan developed for a level of service for our fire department. And that would also include our, you know, the capital facility projects that we need. I think that that's imperative for us to provide a better understanding for the public and then also for us as council members moving forward, because ultimately, you know, we have a very high volume, high volume for our call rate. And I don't quite know why, but it's the demographics of our community, maybe our older population. But it's only going to grow. So, you know, this is something that's been going on for a while. I want to make sure that we are, we are providing a good roadmap for our community and for our fire department moving forward so that they, they're, we have kind of concurrency when it comes to development and the future. So, I hope that that kind of gets done in tandem with this process of FEMA funds.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, we brought this to the mayor of the council because obviously it was a great opportunity for filling a need. And we have that need right now, as we said. We can't currently do a two-in-one-out rescue, imminent rescue. That problem doesn't go away whether we have the grant money or not. And so, with the opportunity for this, we were obliged to bring it to the council to, as a, what we considered a really, really good alternative, until, you know, give us that time, that three years, and to do a concurrent strategic plan study, as was mentioned, to look at what the risks are, what the current staffing is, what the future staffing needs are, potential revenues that can be generated. So, at the end of that three years, you know, we could, we could fund these positions as indicated by the strategic plan. And hopefully, that means that doesn't impact any other city positions. But that's the treated, that concurrent strategic plan is absolutely critical. We're looking at right now, just making sure the council understands, we have a, we have a need, and this is a potential three-year plan to get us closer to meeting at least the opportunity to do a rescue out of one station if that situation comes up.
So, do you have other thoughts? Mr. Young?
Just wanted to, you know, echo what the council, as well as the chiefs, have said. It really is a great opportunity for us. It addresses the needs that we've known that we've long have. We are expanding. It is something that we will need to address at some point, and we've got an opportunity now. And to also echo Ms. Cleland McGrath in the sense that whatever we need to do at the end of this time, three-year time, the grant cycle, it allows us a chance to prepare for what other alternatives there are for us. And that allows, you know, whether the chief and other grants or other opportunities, but it is something we need to address. And I think that, to Mr. Miller's question of it being at a certain station, because that's where the largest numbers of people are served out of that and the calls are coming out of it, I just think it's something we really need to do. And I also would like to echo that it does not come at the expense of those other departments. As Ms. Moulton pointed out, that each of those facilities have a great need and the service to the communities that they do is essential. And it's also what makes us Anacortes and the lovely place that we live in. So, you know, with that said, I'm supportive of this process going forward.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion, or we want to do a head nod? Or put your hand up if you're just saying to the council, go ahead and start the work.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, I guess on the agenda bill, we have a recommended motion. So, I move to authorize Mayor Gere to apply for a SAFER grant for three firefighters.
All right.
Backing.
We have a motion, a second?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Great discussion. Thank you, both chiefs, and Mr. Hoagland. And at this time, we'll move on to Item C. It's a contract award, 2021 for water line replacement, number 21-006 WTR-001. This is discussion with possible action. Mr. Buckamire?
Thank you, Mayor, council, and whatever members of the public might be watching. This is our annual 2021, or our annual water line replacement project for 2021. As council and mayor are aware, we budget $1.1 million per year to take care of our water lines and maintain the integrity of our system. This year, we are asking consent to award a contract in the amount of $943,392.83 to Summit Contractors Incorporated. There are multiple locations. There's maps included in your packet, but just for the record, they are, let's see, there's, we're doing a water line replacement on Vale Street from Dune to Kingsway, Tweed Place, 22nd Street from E to G, 35th Street and T Avenue, 35th and V Avenue, 38th and V Avenue, and additionally, some work on 24th Street from M to R Avenue. The contract is for a fixed price, as we, as we mentioned, and the end of the contract date, the end of construction date is anticipated to be completed before October 29th, 2021. We went out to bid for this work in, on January 27th. We received 10 bids, and those were opened on February 11th, so it was a good bidding pool. Summit X was the lowest responsible bidder. The engineer's estimate for this project was the $1.1 million that we had budgeted. And with that, we were asking council to authorize the mayor to sign that contract with Summit X in the amount of $943,392.83.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Miller?
I know everybody's read through the package, and it's a pretty major upgrade. It's not, it's something that we know that's coming on. But you know, like a broken record, every time we do, and you know, the question is, when we're digging this up, other opportunities to do work, I know your staff is always, whether it's fiber, whether it's other utilities, get it underground. I know we don't have that probably as official policy as we want it to be, but I know your staff works hard on being smart about that as we're digging up roads and water lines to do that. So, you'll just tell me, tell me and the rest of the council that you're on it, and I'm happy.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. I should, I should probably pat the guys on the back harder than I do, but yeah, we always looking out for that. Whatever storm, and this is all storm work or sewer work will be done also. And some of this is in preparation for overlays, and some of it's just because it's old aging lines. Thank you.
Yeah, right, overlays as well.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any action you might want to take?
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Miller?
I move that the council approve the contract award for the 2021 water line replacement, number 21006 WTR-001, as presented.
Thank you.
Backing.
Motion by Mr. Miller, and second by Mr. Walters. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item tonight is Item D. It's our contract modification for the wastewater treatment plant downfall project. This is for the consultant, number 20-032-SEW-001. This is a discussion with possible action. Mr. Buckamire, or Mr. Scharbeck?
Yeah, Mr. Scharbeck's going to handle this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. We're working away on our wastewater treatment plant downfall project. And before I dive into this budget request, I'd like to say that I scheduled a presentation for the council meeting on March 22nd, which is three meetings from now, to go through the project. I think it's been a little quiet. We've been, you know, really working hard on this. There's been a lot of moving parts, and things are starting to kind of clear, clear up as far as design and funding and partnering and that sort of thing. So, we'll have a presentation in a few weeks and really get into a lot of detail. So, I won't go too far today, but just, so what we're asking for is a modification to a contract... so what we're asking for is a modification to a contract for Dalton Olmstead and Fugelvand, and mainly it's Rob Webb. He's taken on the task of helping me manage the project. And at the Public Works Committee today, I explained what we're doing. And it is, it's an increase of costs, that's for sure. We're going from $130,000 to $362,000. And the committee just wanted to be really clear on what the city was getting for this work, cognizant of our spending of taxpayer dollars. So really, the easy way to say it is that when I first brought Rob on, it was really as an advisor to kind of help me make sure that I was organizing the project the right way. He's an expert at marine construction. He's a marine engineer. He does dredging. He worked for the city back when we did the Skyline Dredging Project in 2010. And he did a really good job. But since then, we've morphed him into more of a very active role as opposed to just an advisor. He's actually managing the project. It's very complex, and he's helping with his expertise. He's also taken on some regulatory work. He's, he's coordinating the contractors, designers, design teams. He's the Department of Ecology Oversight, Environmental Monitoring, Department of Ecology Toxic Control Program. He's working with the Dredge Material Management Office with the Army Corps of Engineers. And this is the kind of stuff that he, I can't even pronounce it, but he can talk about it for hours at a time. So he truly is an expert. And I hope, I hope that explains, you know, part of the modification. And this, these funds are to take us through the acquisition of contractors. We've split this project up into two distinct projects. One is upland work, one is marine work, and he's going to help us get contractors for both. Again, I, like I said, I scheduled a presentation for the 22nd, and we can really get into detail. Otherwise, I'm open. Any questions?
Mr. Scharbeck, I mean, Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young?
Mr. Scharbeck, just because, just for the public clarity, and because we, you know, discussed much of this in our committee meetings, you know, just elaborate a little, just a little bit more on, what we were attempting to do is just basically, it's unusual in the sense that it's a necessary change, and we have to be so specific about how it's done and that it's done well. And that that is the reason why you've gone with this particular work order in order to try to make that as pristine as possible. Can you elaborate just a second on that?
Um, I think I, I think I understand the questions. So this work, if I never had contracted, contacted Rob, this work would have been done by another contractor. But since I asked him to come in, we redistributed the work in the project, and he took on a lot, or some or a lot of the work that another consultant was going to do. And so, and he did that on my request. Just, I was trying to organize this project. Again, it's complicated and just trying to make all the pieces work. And that seemed like the best use of that money. So it's not added money. We're just shifting some funds from one contract, but not literally the contract, from one consultant to another.
You've answered my question. I guess what I was just really trying to get at is that because of his special expertise, this is the best use of funds that we could for this particularly complicated project. And that after a lot of review, it's just the best thing we can do for use of proceeds.
That's absolutely true. Yes.
Thank you.
And I also want to add, it's just not Rob that's being paid. I'm counting, it looks to me like there's seven, eight, seven or eight other people involved. And depends on what area of expertise or design. So everyone has a piece of this puzzle. It's not one person doing all this work. Is that correct, Eric?
That's correct. Rob is my contact. And then he has people working for him that I don't usually talk to, but so when I...
Right. But that's what that amount of money covers. It's just not going to Rob to be your, he's got a whole team of people, of experts in this field. Okay.
Sure, sure.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
And, and Eric, I think that was a great explanation about shifting the, shifting kind of the management, management piece. It's not, it's not additional money. But perhaps you could remind the council and perhaps the public the overall cost of this project or overall approximate cost.
Yeah, that does kind of add a little, you know, add something. So the engineer's estimate for installation of the pipe that, and you see the blue alignment of the pipe, that's, it's $22 million is the engineer's estimate for that. So, and typically, as we were talking in committee, you know, you look at percentages of overall cost for, for design and, and construction oversight and that sort of thing. And this, you know, we're, we're just falling right into the typical, you know, percentages as far as design and construction oversight.
With an organization that we know we've worked with and, and we have confidence in it's going to provide us the best management, putting out the RFP to get us the, the best value for the 20-plus million dollar project.
There is a reason I called Rob when I started this project. He wasn't originally part of it, but I called him, and he gained everybody's respect on the team.
Because I mean, I think that's an important thing for the public, picking this, this contract and continuing with this contract ideally will give us the best value for this very large multimillion dollar project.
Absolutely.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Molton?
Based on Mr. Scharbeck's explanation and council member comments, I would like to move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign a modification to contract 20032 SEW-001 with Dalton Olmstead and Fugelvand, Inc. in the amount of $222,240, increasing the total contract price to $362,240.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Mr. McDougal. Is there any additional comments? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Thank you.
Presentation. So the next item on the agenda this evening is item E. This is Resolution 3022 authorizing the distribution of tourism promotion funds. This is a discussion possible action, and Mr. Musimer will do the presentation.
Thank you, mayor. Members of the council and those that may be listening at home, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on February 18th, 2021 to consider a request from the Anacortes Public Works Department for the installation of two charge point, EV charging stations at City Hall for use by the public and visitors and tourists. The installation of the chargers will coincide with an LID, Low Impact Development retrofit parking lot project to include a rain garden element as a demonstration project for the community. So, you know, local contractors will actually be able to have a hands-on look at what that looks like. The requested funds, $17,188.24 is a 51% match for a grant received from the Department of Commerce. So the Department of Commerce grant also includes another charge point station at the library. But the matching funds for that will be provided through a different source. So with that, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommends approval of Resolution 3022, funding two charging stations to be installed at City Hall and with no fee to customers for their use. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I guess I have a couple of questions. First of all, from the cover sheet, it's a little bit unclear whether the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee approved the full amount or if we didn't estimate the correct amount when we went to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee?
A great question, Mr. Walters. So the estimate when we went to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee was $337 short. So they approved the $16,851.
So is it our sense that we need to get them to approve the extra 300 bucks?
No, I, I've talked to a couple of the folks on the committee, and none of them have had any problem. And they're all very excited about the installation.
Okay. So I guess then my next question is, you mentioned there that we wouldn't be charging users of the charging station?
So the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommended that, that we did not charge a fee. And Russ Pittis would know more about this. But if I remember correctly, it's like a $3 to start off, and then something like 30 cents an hour or so after that. But the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee felt that it would be a bigger draw for tourists if there were no fee. I also checked around, the one at Walgreens doesn't charge a fee, from what I can tell. It doesn't have a credit card reader anyway.
Yeah, I guess I, I think we ought to approve this expense, but I don't think we ought to put that proviso on it. We should leave it open to figure out what the best method is. Because the benefit of having the charge point stations here, I think, is that we can charge a fee. And I am concerned that it won't be used by tourists if there's not a disincentive to park your car there and leave it there every day of the week all year, which I have heard is something that other charging stations have, including ones owned by the city, have suffered from. So I think we can work that out. But I don't, I don't think that we should just necessarily accept that as the policy right away. See how it works out instead.
Absolutely.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, and, you know, just on that, I think that's, that's a good idea. Because along that lines, you know, at least one of the hoteliers that has a charging station, you know, they'll charge, they won't charge guests, but you can also, I think, pull in and, and charge to it. So, yeah, that's a very, very good point. But as far as the dollar amounts concerned, again, I don't think it would change the, how the, how the committee felt about. They thought that it could be a tourist draw.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
You know, I am just so encouraged by this and many of the things that we see happening here in the city. I just think that with so many companies, car companies, is coming up with electric cars, this is a progressive move for our city. And I think it really does bode well for those tourists that are coming in in their electric vehicles and realizing that we have a place for them. Unless there's any other discussion that anyone else want to have about this, I move to approve Resolution Number 3022, authorizing execution of the Tourism Promotion Fund contract by and between the City of Anacortes and the COA Public Works Department.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. Walters. Any discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order tonight? Okay, tonight's meeting is adjourned. I'll see you all during the weekend. I'll see you next Monday. Good night.